It is five forty-five and we are going to call a regular meeting of the CMR Unified School District Board of Education for Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. We need a motion for to adopt this evening's agenda.
Move to adopt this evening's agenda of seven o'clock, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion by Santos, second by Naomi Branyay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Santos, yes. Ms. Naomi Branyay, yes. Ms. Candell, yes. Ms. Santos, yes.
Aye.
Give me the stink eye if I'm upset.
We do have minutes to adopt from the regular meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Would any board member like to make any amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
The move we adopt the minutes from November fourteenth.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Candell. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Farm?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Abstain. I wasn't here.
I'm sorry about that. Okay. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Naomi Branyay?
Yes.
And Mr. Stewart?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Which brings us to closed session. If any member of the public would like to comment on closed-session agenda items, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and move to adjourn to closed session, where we will discuss conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, and student discipline. We are adjourned to closed session at five forty-six P M. It is seven o'clock and we are going to reconvene the regular meeting of the Lucium CMR Unified School District Board of Education for Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three to order. The board has been in closed session since five forty-six P M. And we have nothing to report out. I'm happy to kick it off to Dr. Fawcett to introduce our flag salute for this evening.
All right. Thank you, President Stewart. So I'd like to invite up Jackson Patrick Quinn up to the mic. And while Jackson's walking up, I'm going to read a nice statement about him. So Jackson is a sixth-grade student at Shell Beach Elementary School. Jackson enjoys math, playing basketball in recess, and he enjoys P E. He is always a team player, both on the playground and in the classroom. Jackson works hard to achieve his personal best while also encouraging others. We are proud to have Jackson represent Shell Beach Sharks today. Jackson, you may now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, Jackson. Thank you. Well done. Making those sharks proud. And now we'll turn to communications and we'll hear from our student representatives to the board. First up is Katie Slocow from Central Coast New Tech High School.
Hello, everyone. I hope you are all enjoying the holiday season. Even though the first part of our year is coming to a close, we still have lots of events and activities to update you on. In the past month, our ASB students have held two movie nights, where we watched The Great Gatsby and The Hunger Games. We are currently having our annual Dude Be Nice Week, which is a week-long celebration of kindness and a platform for anti-bullying awareness. Our students voted on the theme Dude Be Nice: Kung-Fu Panda Edition. So all of our character-building activities are themed around that movie. We are also planning our Winter Formal, which will be held on January twenty-seventh at Black Lake Country Club, and our students voted on the theme today. During November, we celebrated students' birthdays with sweet treats and held an academic honors breakfast for our high-achieving students and served them ice cream at lunch. New Tech ASB also created a kindness wall, where students could write kind notes and express their gratitude for their friends and their teachers on World Kindness Day. Next, for some community events. We had a dine-and-donate fundraiser at Five Guys in Aurora Grande to raise money for ASB. And Link Crews also held a fundraiser at Urbane Cafe in Santa Maria. Link Crews also starting their season of recruitment, as well as parent information nights. Now on to academics. I am proud to say New Tech was just voted number-one public school in Slow County by niche. This might be due to our amazing projects and teachers. This past month, all of our math students participated in our annual math art night, where students created art pieces based on mathematical equations and concepts. Our ninth graders just finished their Revolutionaries on Trial project in their World Studies class. Our tenth graders are playing their own version of the game Clue during chemistry on campus and identifying the properties of the periodic table, which will give them clues to find the suspects. Our juniors just finished their salon night projects, which drew large crowds that included members of the school board and local government. Thank you for attending. Three students, Mason, Hannah, and Yuri, along with the political studies facilitator, Mr. James, even spoke about the project on a local radio station. Lastly, for our seniors, we are preparing for Poetry Out Loud Night on December twentieth from five thirty to eight P M., and we invite you all to come. For our clubs on campus, Leo Club is hosting a winter clothing drive. Our outdoor club is holding hikes and research studies along with Cal Poly students on native plants. And our NAMI club brought service dogs to play with our students during lunch. Our NAMI crochet club also donated over twenty-five blankets, beanies, and I V covers to French Hospital with the help of A G H S Crochet and Knitting Club. Now on to athletics, band, and theater. Many students from New Tech are in the N H S Band, which have been performing at Napoma Basketball Games. They are also performing at our Dude Be Nice Rally along with our hysterical artist Improv Troop. Cross Country has made it to C I F and our esports team has also made it to regionals. Before I end my board report, I wanted to acknowledge a C C and T H student, Caesar Vasquez, who is at this time being awarded a ten-thousand-dollar grant we wrote together from the Fund for Santa Barbara for his program Reach. Reach helps youth in Santa Barbara reach their full potential excuse me, Reach helps youth in Santa Maria reach their full potential through educational workshops. And we are all very proud of you, Caesar. As always, I would like to thank my leadership advisors and thank you so much for listening. Stay safe over the holidays and enjoy spending time with your family and friends, and I'll see you all next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Next up is Rebecca Rizzo from Alternative Education.
Good evening, board and attendees. Thanks for the opportunity to share news to share with you news and events from Lopez and Pacific View. Today, Lopez took a team of students to Delta High School in Orchid to compete in a flag football tournament. Later this year, we will host a basketball tournament and participate in a soccer tournament. Last Wednesday, a group of six students from Lopez attended the Construction Trades Apprenticeship Forum at the Steamfitters Hall in Slow. They saw demonstrations, met current apprentices, and learned about all learned about their experiences in all of the construction crafts, including sheet metal, electrical, plumbing, and carpentry. Students had the opportunity to learn whether construction trades, learn-and-earn apprenticeship model is right for them. In addition to leaving campus, we have also lined up a few guest speakers to visit. Science Discovery visited our science classes to give our students the opportunity to learn all about vermicomposting. Students learned about how worms turn decomposing waste into clean soil and even got up to even got to set up a worm bin in the classroom that they will take care of in the coming weeks. Before winter break, Carlos Guerrero, co-founder of Central Coast Alumni for Recovery, will visit Lopez for an all-school assembly to talk about his life story, his struggles, and how he found a way out of a destructive lifestyle. We've hosted a couple of spirit days this year. One was wearing school colors and the other was twin day with students dressed in matching outfits. Our next spirit day will be at the end of the semester. People are encouraged to wear an ugly sweater and will serve fruitcake from last year. Just kidding. We'll enjoy fresh cookies and hot cider. Speaking of food, our garden continues to grow. Last week, we harvested our first batch of snap peas and carrots. Along with them, we picked arugula, lettuce, and radishes, so students could enjoy could enjoy a salad from the garden's produce. Last Thursday, students and families were invited to Lopez to celebrate a variety of awards from the first two quarters of school. We presented certificates for Wolf Honors, Star Awards, Academic Achievement, and Excellent Attendance. Two students earned plaques for being model students of the semester. Guest author Barbara Barcelona Smith was a speaker and reader slash presenter at P V A last Monday. She read aloud her book called Let's Eat Snails and talked about respect for each other's cultures, backgrounds, and ways of eating. She showed a video during the assembly about how to raise and cook snails and which cultures do so. Students of all ages talked about different or strange things they've eaten and enjoyed too. We have received information regarding early acceptance letters coming in for P V A students. One student was recently accepted to California State University Chico, where he will major in history and music, while another student was accepted to Montana State University. P V A is proud of these students and we hope to get many more acceptance letters in the future. That's it for P V A and Lopez. Thank you again for your support.
Next up, we have Savannah Willett from Napoma High School.
You cut the Titan colors on.
I know. My bad.
Good evening, everybody. We've had exciting things happen at Napoma High School in the last month. Starting off our ASB class organized a canned food drive, we were able to donate over eight hundred cans. And Mr. John McConnell's second-period class alone was able to collect over seven hundred cans, and they were rewarded with a donut party. ASB also hosted our annual staff soup luck, which is always a big hit. ASB members each make a soup and then we set it up in the staff lounge buffet style, and staff members can choose from a wide variety of soups. This year, we had over thirty different soups, which is the most we've ever had before. Our leadership class, Link Crew, also puts on a Titan Bolt store twice a month. Students can earn Titan Bolts by showing their Titan pride and following the Pride Matrix. They then can redeem these points by using five-star to get any array of snacks. This is a great way to give back to the student body for all the hard work that they do. Our Link Crew also gives specific lessons to our freshman advisory classes to help them teach to help teach them about the Pride Matrix and help them achieve excellence. We also had several ASB members participate in the To Be training, where students learned about tobacco and drug prevention. F F A is hosting their annual toy drive. They just made their first donation to the Noel Christmas Program, which is run by some of the students' parents. They adopt several families in Napoma and then help give them their children a nice Christmas. Their annual winter banquet is coming up on December thirteenth. This banquet, they will recognize their state degree holders, Green Hand officers, and they'll also recognize their opening and closing teams. Other clubs on campus have been also throwing many events. Our C S F Club held their annual movie night in hopes of fundraising for other events that they would like to do in the future. Drama just had a karaoke night, and our Best Buddies Club just had their Unity Basketball Game, which was hosted at N H S against Aurora Grande High School on December fifth. We had a lot of the students attend, and it was a really great turnout. With all that being said, that's all I have to report for this month, and I hope you guys have a happy holiday.
Thanks, Savannah. And next up, we have Kayla Sisena from A G High School.
Good evening. I'm glad to be back once again to update you guys on the amazing events at A G H S and what we've been hosting. First off, with our leadership program, we have been really busy prepping for this week's Tis the Season. This is one of the five spirit weeks we host. Each day, we are dressing up and hosting lunchtime activities, as well as putting on special events like AM's Perfect Attendant Rupee Floats and Sophomore Social, where Link Crew bakes goodies and provides hot chocolate for sophomores. The biggest event is Friday's Winter Spectacular, which Izzy, our V P, spoke about last month. A team of ASB members were able to visit almost all the elementary schools last week, promoting this community event. All three classes have been very very busy working on multiple clubs sorry, working with multiple clubs, culinary band and choir to make this special event. We plan on having live music, food, crafts, and games, and of course, Santa. We also have added a life-size snow globe for taking pictures inside, as well as having five tons of snow for attendees to play in. This event is free for families, and we invite you to come this Friday from five to seven in the quad. Last week, our leadership students and other supporters packed the bus to travel to Napoma High School for our first ever, sorry, Special Olympics Unified Basketball Game. A group of ASB members had been working for a month with a handful of these students to help develop their basketball skills. I was one of the nearly forty A G H S students who cheered for our team. It was amazing. It was an amazing exclusive event, and we'd like to thank Napoma for their hospitality. Both sides cheered when an athlete scored, regardless of what team they were playing for, and I know that athletes loved hearing the crowd behind them. A G H S is excited to host a track meet in spring, providing these students an opportunity to compete. Next, I'd like to share with you updates on the clubs and programs. F F A has been selling Christmas trees on our farm in the ag lot since Thanksgiving break, and there's only twenty-five trees left. Our avid program recently concluded their annual food drive, where A G H S students and staff collected four thousand nine hundred and sixty items to Saint Patrick's Christmas basket. These donations will support over three hundred and fifty families in Napoma and the Five Cities area. Our U B I C classes have been busy formatting senior photos, as well as designing interest and event pages. Their theme this year is graffiti. Our Eagle Time staff of writers were busy in November publishing stories that covered dozens of topics, like photo registration, spotlights on the thespians, and in our next theater productions, our recycling program, and the ever-important Taylor Swift culture. In athletics, or sorry, not athletics, in academics, our cosmetology program had a holiday open house, where cosmetology students provided demos on what they've been learning and got to show off their skills. Ag Mechanics, Floral, and Culinary also got to show off what they've been working on as well. A G Mechanics provided centerpieces for tables with the help of floral. And of course, Culinary provided their amazing food for people to enjoy while walking around. In class, students are currently learning how to provide how to provide service for a manicure and pedicure and learning the ins and outs of how to make the skill perfect. Next week, they are starting a course that consists of facials and hair removal. And when students get back from break, the salon will be open to the community, where students can work on their own clients. Lastly, A G H S has been focusing on creating ways to support our students who are struggling in algebra. We are happy to announce that next semester, we are offering an algebra support class for students. Now on the arts. Carol of the Arts is happening this Wednesday at six P M. This year marks the tenth year A G has been putting it on. The show is happening in the Black Box Theater, where painting, drawing, ceramics, and A P Studio Arts will be recognized. The performance piece will begin at seven P M. and includes bands, choir, dance, theater, and improv. Wind of the Willows is a play that our theater company has been putting on, has been running since last weekend and finishes and is finishing its run this Saturday. All the shows this weekend start at seven in the Black Box. If you haven't yet, I highly recommend seeing it before it's too late. A G H S Winter Concert is happening next Wednesday at seven P M. in the Clark Center. Band, choir, and percussion is putting on an amazing show, and we'd love to see you there. Finally, in athletics. We had a very successful fall season this year with many league titles and a ton of hard work from our athletes on campus. Cross Country, boys' water polo, girls' tennis, and girls' volleyball all finished strong and got second place in league. Our girls' water polo, football, and girls' golf were all undefeated in league and placed first in Mountain League. Thank you so much for your time. I wish you a healthy and happy holiday season and see you next year.
Thank you, Kayla. And again, thank you to all four of our student representatives for being here. I want to extend a special thanks to Rebecca. And would you extend it to Gabriel when you see him as well? This is their last meeting with us, with Lopez and P V A. We'll have new representatives for the spring term. So we really appreciate you taking your Tuesday nights to come spend time with us and just give us an update of the great things that are happening at Lopez and Pacific View Academy. So. And with that, you are welcome to stay, but we're going to turn to the business. It's still a school night, I know that, but you're also welcome to leave. And we'll turn to items of interest from the board. Before we get into items of interest from the board, I'm hoping you'll indulge me in sort of acknowledging the passing of two important members of the Lucium R community. We had Jeff Byers pass away suddenly, who was a teacher at A G High School. And then Don Dennison, who was the former director of Student Services and Special Education, passed away recently too. And they were both vital forces in this community. So I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge their passing. Thank you. And I know we send special condolences to their families and loved ones at this trying time. With that, I'll bring you to the board for items of interest from my fellow board members.
Well, can I go first?
Go first.
Um, I did want to talk about Mr. Dennison. This May, I've been up here for twenty years, and so I've known Don for at least those twenty years. I was a staunch advocate from the audience for a good ten years before I came up here. And I always heard about the backpacking trips with the guys, even some of the guys that work at Slow High and such, and that they always had such a great time. And I think of him as a campfire dad. Hillary's mom was a campfire leader with me. And and just how warm and calm he was when things weren't that measured. And that he gave us, he gave Lucium R the best face as far as being welcoming and kind and gentle to some of the families that needed that the most. You should be proud of them, and you've been a great daughter.
I also would like to say a few words about Mr. Dennison. I knew him as a teacher, as by being a teacher in the classroom. He was one of the strongest advocates for students. He was always gentle and kind. He always had encouraging words, a smile in most situations, but he caused to be very serious. And I'm sure what we saw in Lucium R was multiplied many times within his family. I've seen pictures of you and your sisters, and you could tell the love that was there. He was an obviously asset to our district and.
Santos.
To me, I'm not one of those who really gets out, but when I'd see this this tall gentleman standing there, he was like, oh, wow, he's business, you know? And yet, he was so inviting, and he listened to you, and you were just as important as the next one. He was a true gentleman, and we in Lucium R are very lucky to have him.
His name is Branyay.
Thank you, Hillary. As an advocate, I got to have the opportunity to work with Don Dennison, representing families and I V's and what have you. And I he was a true advocate, someone that listened. Tough cases went before him and always well-mannered, very professional, and always gave the best, believed in student success. And we were very fortunate in Lucium R to have him. So he's up there. He's up there. He's an angel looking over. He's just a well-rounded person, and I'm very fortunate to have worked with him.
Ms. Candell.
Ms. Dixon, I want to give my sympathies to you and your family. And your dad gave so much to this district and not the least of which is you. I just want to send my condolences. I also wanted to acknowledge that Marilyn Dwight is hiring from our district. And I wanted to say a few words about that. You know, it's one thing to be competent, even brilliant, at your job, but it's a whole other thing to do your job well with so much grace and kindness and thoughtfulness, warmth, and love. And I just want to thank you for making our jobs so much easier for what you've been in this district, not just in this position, but before. And I hope you know that you'll be missed.
Cool. Thank you.
I want to say something about Marilyn too.
Sure. Let me before we get to Marilyn, I just want to finish up Mr. Dennison, and then we're going to Marilyn. Great. Just also expressing my condolences and thanks for sharing your dad with the district. Because as you know, it is that work-life balance. I know it's a huge loss and a huge thanks to the family, but it's also it takes a really special person to invest their life's energy in helping others and helping others get to a better place. And because of that, Don lives on in our and that are now members of our community, members of our community. So the loss is, the loss is deep and real. And now we can turn to Marilyn.
I think Marilyn's done every job in this district. So when I first met Marilyn, she was the C M I Data Input Specialist at Mesa Elementary School. So that must have been about nineteen ninety-one, I'm thinking. And we have this system where every single objective for every single student, we were tracking. And so you had a clerical person at every school putting in numbers into an early computer. And Marilyn's worked her way all through the district up to the superintendent's office. And I know that you even did the credential program like I did, but found your niche helping others and making other people shine. And you're always so quiet about it. But she's a real gem, and everyone who's ever worked with her, not a complaint ever, only good things to be said. And I know that all your children and grandchildren are going to just swallow you up and be so happy to have you home with them and be able to go to their school events and visit family and stuff. So I'm very happy for you, but don't think that you're gone, because I think we've known each other. I think I drove Steph to school for a whole year. I don't even know. It's just funny how worlds collide, and they do at Lucium R and in our community. That you're running to someone and you're like, wow, we've known each other for a long time now. And isn't it, isn't it silly that we got to be such good friends doing that play, you know, doing something else? So congratulations on your retirement. It's well deserved.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Ms. Mayor.
So you're going to be retired for a while, and then you're going to realize that you have to find something else to do. And when that happens, come to H and R. Be a sub, be a sub, be a sub. We can use you there. Enjoy your time off. I know you will. Your gardening and your jam making and all of the other things that you're involved with. Thank you for all the help you've given us.
And Marilyn, thank you for supporting our superintendent and all the rest of us for putting our little quirks and whatever. We've enjoyed you, and you've done an awesome job. You were always there, you know, if we had any questions, and you were so calm about it, never get excited, just went on. And we do enjoy your jams and jellies. Those are great. We'll miss that. But enjoy your family. And I think Vicki's right. After you're retired for a little bit, you're going to want to do something. Just get away from home. So come and find us. We're around, but enjoy life and stay safe.
Thank you. You're another person who's in this investment in this district and our students and our staff has paid dividends, right? We're a better district for it, and I will. And then stepping into supporting the superintendent and the board with your quiet confidence and your just sort of, well, we'll just get it done attitude, made that transition seamless. So you will be missed, and I will miss you. Any other items of interest from board members before we turn it over?
So I just went to a conference up in San Francisco for C S B A. Of all the sessions I attended, there was only one that was not so great. The rest was wonderful. We had some good team-building moments, some good food. Got some board members from throughout the state. It was nice to be back at conference as a group, so.
Thanks to COVID, I wasn't able to attend. So anyway, I do want to bring up, we had the salon night here for the opening of our new beauty school.
for the opening of our new beauty school. And it's wonderful to go in there and if you haven't been in there, take a visit or after the first year when they start taking appointments. Those kids are so excited and very professional. It's, it's unbelievable what they're going to be doing. And after sixty-plus years of doing hair, I'm going to be retiring doing hair into this year. So it's, it's fun to see somebody else taking my place. And so now I could teach them a few things that you don't get to learn out on the floor. But it's so exciting to see a new generation come through and they've, they've got a lot to learn. And I think they want to learn everything about it, from barbering to cosmetology. And in cosmetology, there's so many things that you need to know, not just doing hair, but it's manicures, pedicures, facials, all the bones in the body that they work on. And some want to go, and this is because I have done it too, they want to know how to work at a funeral home to dress the hair there. So some have that interest. So there's many things in cosmetology that you need to know. And, and they're so willing and they've got great instructors. Another thing too, I'd like to thank Grover Beach Elementary for the book that they gave us. It was very, very nice. And it's funny because the author who wrote it went to the Art Institute where my son graduated from. And if you've ever been to a wild graduation, you need to go to that graduation at the Art Institute because they really come out with everything and anything and stuff. So, but don't forget our Salon Night. And I want to give produced to the culinary students. They put on a great spread to help their fellow tradespeople. And anywhere you see the culinary kids, they're so proud of the work they've done. And I can remember when we first had this idea about opening a culinary school. I got Doug from Roses and we got some chefs from this area. And we, we brainwashed ourselves and saying, what can we do? How can we compete against Paso and their culinary school? And now I think we've passed them and then some because everywhere you go and culinary kids feed you and it's top notch. And they do a little bit of everything. So I'm so proud of those students. So we've left our mark.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Any other items of interest from board members? Seeing that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fawcett for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Stewart. So I also went to the CSBA conference and thought it was a great opportunity to kind of continue to build the governance team and learn a little bit about the legal updates and the budget that's coming down the pike. And I appreciate all the trustees who were able to take time away from their personal lives to, to go up to the conference and engage in learning. I attended the Salon Open House as well and I was very impressed by the program and the students leading the tour. And then we also had our culinary students and had some hors d'oeuvres for everybody to enjoy after they received the tour. Our CTE programs are looking great and I'm really appreciating the work Kristen Anderson's putting forth to continue to support all the staff and seeing their dreams come to fruition. Phenomenal. Also had the opportunity to go to Salon Night, which is different from the Salon Open House, which is for cosmetology. Salon Night for New Tech is a little bit different where students get to learn about politics and policies and create their own countries essentially in the politics that are underneath those countries and advocate for them to the public there. And they did a phenomenal job, Mr. James and Ms. Kukusko for facilitating that night and making it happen. And then last but not least, and I apologize Marilyn because you do not like the light shined on you. But I just want to say a few words because I've had the opportunity, the pleasure to work with you since my first day in the CMR, which was terrific. Came in as the special education director and you were one of the first people I met. And you immediately took me under your wing, showed me all the kinds of behind the scenes, nuts and bolts and really supported me there so that I could step up and do the work. I could not have done it without you there. And so I was really excited when I got to bring you back on in the superintendent's office. And the same thing goes there. You step right into it, you continue to provide that high level of support. Just, you know, you're always that person that I can just count on, day in and day out, inside the workday, outside the workday, over weekends. You were always there and I really dedication to district and the roles that you, that I've been with you and even before. A big round of applause for Marilyn Dwight. And I also want to acknowledge too Raquel Ghanu, who's joining the team up here and is up here tonight. And Marilyn's been doing a phenomenal job providing a little bit of transitional support. And we're really excited, Raquel, for what you're going to bring too. So thank you for stepping up into the role. It's a very important role and I'm excited. Round of applause for you too. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. And now we turn to the business of the meeting. As a reminder, any member of the public may comment on agenda items as each item is presented. If you wish to address the board, please complete a speaker card. They're located at the back entrance. There's yellow cards for items that are on the agenda and there are blue cards for items that are not on the agenda. For none, there's a separate opportunity at the end of the meeting for the non items that are not on tonight's agenda, but within the purview of the business of the district. Speakers are normally limited to three minutes apiece or less and each item has a twenty-minute time limit on it. We have a list of decorums that you'll see at the back of the agenda of how we expect the meeting, how to address the board and being respectful for each other. So please familiarize yourselves with them. For anybody that's new to a public meeting, we are governed by the Brown Act, which limits our ability to respond to public comment. So it's, it's not an opportunity to be in public discussion for these items. It's an opportunity for us to sit back and hear what your concerns are, what you have to say. So just know that if we don't, if we don't respond, it's because we can't, that the Brown Act precludes that. But we do value the public participation. And then we also have translation services available. So if anybody needs Spanish translations, just let us know and we can have that translation available for you. And with that, we turn to the business of the district with the consent calendar. Consent calendar items one through eleven, would any member of the board like to pull an item for further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment on the consent calendar. If any member of the public would like to comment on items one through eleven, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the board, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar from item one through eleven. Second.
Motion by Santos, second by Martin. Roll call vote please.
Santos?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Amy Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin? President Stewart.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. And now we move on to reports and presentations, resolutions, proclamations, item number twelve. School site presentation, Shell Beach Elementary, Dr. Fawcett.
All right. Thank you, President Stewart. It is my pleasure to introduce Principal James Snyder, who will be providing an update on Shell Beach Elementary's intentional collaboration between students, staff and the community. Shell Beach Elementary is committed to accelerating students' academic and social emotional growth. And we're excited to hear what you have to share, Mr. Snyder.
Great. Thank you so much. I want to start by thanking all of you for the opportunity to, to address the board and talk about the wonderful things that are happening at Shell Beach. I am an extremely proud principal of our school.
Principal Snyder, you've got to get closer to that mic.
Close, okay.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's okay. Is that better?
Yes.
I'm an extremely proud principal at Shell Beach Elementary. I'm a little bit biased, but I think we have the best school in the district, if not the whole central coast. But, and I also know that, you know, there's no way, there's so much that goes on even at a small school like ours to make sure we're serving our students. So this is just an overview of some of the highlights maybe of what we're doing. And, and I, I would want to say that none of this happens without the incredible teachers that we have at our school. None of it happens without the incredible community that we are privileged to serve. And none of it happens with all the classified staff. So we, we're a, we're a big family to support our students. But to give some highlights, there's a down button. I'd like to start at the beginning with our mission and vision. The mission is similar, or if not exactly the same, is the mission for our district. We thought it was important that we aligned with that, that we are following what the district's mission was. But the work then we did, and it's been the past couple of years or so, was on the vision, the where are we going? And so of course, as we've been working through PLCs and getting that training, we knew that that vision was important and we had been working on it as stated for, for maybe two years. And so I just want to read it because it isn't just words. We've worked on what do these words mean? And so through intentional collaboration between students, staff and the community, Shell Beach is committed to accelerating our students' academic and social emotional growth by ensuring high expectations for all students. Now, it's not necessarily, that could be a vision, I think, for almost any school, right? So vision sometimes can be general, like what does that mean? Are these just words? We put them up in the classroom, so that's great. But the important work on the vision as shown here is to make sure that we're defining what we mean. And so we've spent time as a staff to define what we mean when we talk about intentionally collaborating, accelerating academic growth and accelerating social emotional growth. And so as a staff, we work to kind of put all those pieces together. And you can see them here, a lot of the things that we knew were important in order to meet that vision, we talked about and we agreed upon are these things that we're ready and willing to do as a staff. And so again, I won't go through all those, but it was an important conversation. And it allowed us to look at our vision as not just words on a page. And so that, that's the really, I believe, important part. So another thing that we worked on, and this actually came from, and this is sort of to give you all the broader view perhaps of where we're going. In this rubric, this is actually the University of Virginia School Readiness Protocol. We call it our five-year plan. I borrowed this from Brad Grumbles, who's sitting right back there when he was at Ocean View. And we, we've been working on this five-year plan for a couple of years now. We're, we're three years in. What we're finding, by the way, is that it's not really a five-year plan. We're not done with this in two years. It's a five-year plan that restarts every year. And that's okay because it, it kind of helps us focus on the things that are important. But in this, you'll see that we spend time at the beginning of the year highlighting what is our, what are our areas of focus? And so you can see in the highlights in twenty-one, twenty-two, when we started to use this to drive our school and our vision and our purpose, the yellow are the highlights. This wasn't something that I just sat down and said, oh, this is important. This wasn't even something that just our leadership sat down and said, oh, this is important. This is a survey given to all teachers. They've got it every year since twenty-one, twenty-two. And the survey gives us information on what is it that we need to work on. And so as a way to kind of organize what I'd like to highlight on things that we meet our vision and to work towards fulfilling our five-year plan, the red arrows or the highlights there point to the three things that I'd like to spend a little bit more time talking about. The first one is school-wide behavior expectations developed. One, actually before I get any further, you can see that there are three columns that foundational core and deep execution, right? So we're always moving towards that deep execution. When we say school-wide behavior expectations develop, that, that doesn't mean that we didn't have that before. But it does mean that through feedback from staff, at the end of last year, we said, we need to come back to this. And so this was very helpful for us. Another thing I'd like to focus on is that second red arrow under the core execution, which is small group classroom interventions in place. We wanted to make sure we were focused on that as well. And then finally, highly effective intervention structures, trying to shift it over to the deep execution. So those are the three things I want to, I'd like to overview. And so the first one was the school-wide behavior expectations. Again, these are things that all schools work on at all times, right? So it's not just like suddenly we're like, oh, we have to have behavior expectations. It was more the structure that we had in order to support the expectations that we have for our students wasn't quite right. And so we did, as other schools had already done, but we created a separate climate and culture team with teachers that were really interested in giving feedback. And their goal was to streamline all of our expectations and help importantly, the school feel empowered and data-driven. A lot that I heard from our teachers was, yeah, we know, you know, what the expectations are, but we don't know what happens, you know, when we send a slip or when we ask you to talk to a student. And so we wanted to be data-driven. And so that led us to create a yellow-green system. And furthermore, now we have from, from that conversation, what you're looking at here is, and this is from the help of Brett Gimlin, who's sitting right back there as well. We are able to track on a daily basis, yellow slips. So these are just warnings for students. Hey, remember, we don't run up the slide. Hey, remember, we need to walk when we're on the blacktop, whatever it may be. But so as teachers fill these out, we enter them at the end of the day and we're, we're able to track day in, day out, how many yellow slips are being given. Just as important, the one below that is our green slips. And these are things when we're encouraging students and reminding them they're making good choices and reinforcing. That's the whole PBIS, it's Positive Behavior Interventions and Sports. So this, we are also able to track how many of those green slips are given on the daily. And then we can compare the two. This, this leads to really rich discussions. Our whole staff has access to all of this. They can pull it up at any time. We can use it to kind of drive conversations about why was it on September twelfth? It looks like a whole bunch of students got green slips. What was happening then? How can we keep doing that? Or alternatively, it looks like it was September twenty-fifth, we had like fifteen yellow slips, right? And then as we go from year to year, the hope is to compare year in, year out. One thing we talked about, just really quick on this, is that for the yellow slips, which again are warnings, these are not things that are, that are like way on the far end of, of behavior and discipline, but it's things that students need to be reminded of. I always thought October was one of the hardest months at schools. My experience at a school tells me that October can get a little bit dicey sometimes. But this is showing us that actually there's more in September. So the question is why? Is that just this year? What does that mean for us as a school? How are we supporting our kids? So I'm proud of sort of how this was developed and I believe it was because of the vision that we have and furthermore, the tracking that we're doing based on the five-year plan. The next one is the small group classroom interventions in place. Just a little bit of a timeline. So we, in twenty-twenty-one, we realized that we needed to be consistent with workshops or small groups within the classroom, daily five, whatever you want to call it. But in order to do that, we need to make sure that teachers, some were doing that, some may not have. But we wanted to make sure everyone got a chance to see what that looked like in a classroom in our district and also up north and, and slow coastal that we're implementing that. So that was kind of the first, like, hey, let's make sure we're all on the same page. And then at the start of last school year, we had Rebecca Emel, who is incredible from Lang, visit and she did a training on math workshops. We have the reading and the math workshops. The reason I'm bringing this up in regards to classroom interventions is that we know that when we're doing those small group rotations, that does allow for the teacher to pull that small group. That's that tier-two instruction that should be happening in all classrooms throughout the day. And so that was work we did in order to make sure, this is the, the your one, two and three PBIS-based response to intervention. That's, that was sort of a driver for us, of course, and a reminder, the tier-two is what we really need to make sure we're focusing on, what does that look like in the classroom? The next slide shows two pictures and I thought this was, again, having to do with highly effective intervention structures. One of these pictures is of an intervention teacher in a tier-three focused individualized intervention, which we are so fortunate. We have two intervention teachers and the data we're getting because of those intervention teachers or, or partly because of those intervention teachers has been exciting. The, the other picture is what's happening in a second grade classroom. They look very similar. And that's by design because we, we needed to make sure that there's interventions with the students that needed it were happening regularly. And as we like to say, we want to make sure that students get a double dose. Kids who really need that support should be getting the tier-two and the tier-three. They should be getting all of the above in order to make sure that they are successful. Also in regards to highly effective intervention structures, this was twenty-twenty-one and Shelby West helped us put this together and I don't want to go through all of that. But, but what it is, is we had teachers wondering, I have a concern whether it be, and this is on the far left side, emotional, academic, physical health. emotional, academic, physical health, language, behavior, whatever it may be. It wasn't clear to everyone how they got from point A to point B, C, and D. B being extra support, C being intervention, D possibly being, does the child need to be assessed? Is there something else going on? And so we put together this flow chart to try to help with, this is how we get there. And so one thing I'd like to highlight is, we call it our MTSS team. It's that fourth box on the top. We would meet every week talking about any concerns that come up from the teachers about any student for any of the things that are listed, emotional, academic, all those. And then from there, we route where it is the best way for that student to get support. The difference when we created this, this was, again, this is a version of the twenty-one, is when we created this in twenty-one, we did not have all the intervention support we currently have. And so we could even right now put in between that third and that fourth box, we get data from FastBridge and we can, students are flagged and they can automatically pull for academic support. So that is an incredible addition to this sort of flow chart to make sure that no students fall through the cracks. This is some of the data, it's just this year data. And I just started kind of processing it, but it's certainly something to celebrate. On the left is our at Shell Beach, our twenty-twenty-three state testing data. The percentage of students who did not meet the standard of grade level expectation in math and then in ELA. On the right is we have our first trimester FastBridge data. So that's our, we do it three times a year. It's a way for us to see where our where our students, how well our students are performing. One, I wanted to know, and a question that was asked when we looked at this data is, do those things talk to each other? Does, meaning, are they equivalent? Is the state test equivalent to what FastBridge provides for us? And last year Brett was able to find specifically with ELA, to find a whole lot of overlap between student success and FastBridge and student success in in the state test. But we take this data with a with a fair heaping of caution. One being, we know the FastBridge test in the second trimester gets harder. That's the one, we saw it last year. Two, I still think that the state test by and large is more difficult. I'm not sure we're quite there with having the two talk to each other and being equivalent. But it is certainly something to celebrate. Another thing to celebrate is that in reading intervention, we have, this is this trimester, or this cycle, we had thirty-six students in math intervention. We had twenty-nine, twenty-seven students at our school exited after the first trimester. Twenty-two of them were in fourth and sixth grade. This huge cohort of students that had been flagged, they need support. After that first trimester, they were exited out their way, their way they should be. And then just as excitingly, there's no students in sixth grade flagged by FastBridge that were not in already receiving RSP or Special Education Services. So there's not a sixth grader on our campus that the FastBridge says, oh, there's an academic concern here. So that, and that's not what it looked like at the beginning of the year. So there were a whole handful that, because of intervention and that support, that we were able to cycle out. Couple of things that we're really excited about. We have a pretty robust GATE program at Shell Beach. We had twenty-five new students that qualified for GATE this year. We invited fifteen sixth-grade students, we call it Friends of GATE. So these are students who have aptitude in some, in some way that we want to make sure all students have aptitude, but are interested in doing GATE and what GATE can provide. And the clubs include Yearbook, Advanced Art, Advanced Math, Circuitry, Scribble Box, Battle of the Books. I'd like a quick shout out for Ms. Amber Weber, who's a second-grade teacher. She runs our GATE program, and she is incredible at it. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight while you're all's attention right now is music. The music at our school and in our district has been incredible. We were able to do a December performance just a couple of weeks ago for our TK through three. We had hundreds of parents come out, they loved it. But more importantly perhaps is the fact that our students are getting musical and artistic instruction, which we all know is a really important part of any student's education. We have a buddies program, meaning our upper grades partner with our lower grades. We have peer mediators. I know that Branch last year, I believe, was a school that kind of piloted the peer mediator program. That is going really well. That's when students are able to help other students with any conflict that they may have. It sort of builds up the student as they learn to be a mediator, but they also provide a lot of support for all their, all their peers. And then a lot of the community events, the music performances mentioned, Art in the Dark, parent picnic, we do a big one in the fall, a big one in the spring, trimester awards. We have the Mobile Opera House come to our school. And then I'd also like to point out our Bright Futures program. I feel, you know, the after-school program in our, in our district, I've, you know, been here ten years, and I would say that this year is the strongest I've seen. It's really meeting our kids where they need to be. And it's very positive for the students that that need that after-school support. It's just a couple of pictures. On the left is Thanksgiving dinner, and that is in Mr. Mutzel's class. There's our award ceremony with some of our sixth graders will do it trimester. On the left is our Bright Futures Mobile Opera House. I don't know how much you all may know about that, but it is awesome. They come to the school, they pop it up, the kids get to listen to world-class artists. It's really cool. And then the last thing I'll say, and I put this picture here because I knew I'd forget it, and indeed I did, is a part of our green slips, we have a shark store. And so this is a place where students, as they make those great choices, can also grab something that's of interest to them. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Yeah.
Questions for board members?
And this is Opera House, that's pretty cool.
Great place to be.
One of the best views in the district, too. One of the best views in the district, too.
Seeing no questions, we'll go to public comment on item number twelve. If any member of the public would like to comment, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for additional comment.
I think your intervention sounds great. I mean, it looks like you've exited so many kids that you can reassess and bring struggling learners into the program. So those kids are lucky at your school.
Other comments? Miss Naomi Brinier?
Thank you for the presentation. So what makes the Bright Futures program so great this year? I mean, what what's different?
Good question. From my perspective, we, it was a year ago or so, we shifted to having Luciemar employees on each site helping to oversee that program. I think it was maybe a bit hodgepodge among amongst our schools before that. So in the past year or so, our lead secretary, Autumn, she's the one that directly supports as a frontline, the Bright Futures program, doesn't do the hiring, doesn't do the budgeting. But it's more of like, the Bright Futures now has someone they can go to for support on the daily basis, who's there every day. To me, that is a big part of the success. And that's the big difference that I can see as I compare it to maybe three years ago.
Thank you.
I'll say thank you again. I mean, it was really helpful to see how data-driven you are, how student-centered focused, and to reaffirm that we have expectations, high expectations, that all our students on our campuses can succeed. So that was, that was wonderful to hear, and I really appreciate the sort of bottom-up approach that's instilled on your campus and when it comes to collaboration. Fantastic work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. And this is report only, so this closes item number twelve. Thank you for being here. And we move on to item number thirteen. Approval Acceptance Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Annual Financial Report for Luciemar Unified School District as prepared by Aid Bailey LLP Certified Public Accountants, Mr. Ike Purg.
Thank you, President Stewart. At this time, he beat me to it, I didn't get to do my introduction. I do, I do not want to steal Mr. Gustafson, his thunder. But Aid Bailey is our independent auditor. As required, each year, the district does have our financial reports reviewed by an independent investigator. And this evening, we do have the pleasure of partner at Aid Bailey, Mr. Scott Gustafson presenting.
All right, well, thank you for the introduction. I'll keep it short and sweet, but I'm, some of you know for years now, I'm happy to hang out all night. We can chat about anything you like. President Stewart, members of the board. I will open with saying, I, I really appreciate the usage of investigator. That makes us sound probably more important than we are in some ways. So that's pretty awesome. But, you know, we're just the auditors. And so I'll kind of recap a little bit. We used to visit a couple of times a year. We kind of still visit a couple of times a year, but with the wonderful advent of technology these days, we're pretty much in everybody's business all the time. So Rhonda and her team and the folks at your sites and the different departments, we're probably constantly bugging them nowadays. The audits are just so much larger than they used to be. As you'll notice with the audit this year, there's another implementation of another GASB, because we just can't leave well enough alone. And we just love to add more pages to this wonderful report that you guys get every year that, you know, I'm sure you spend a lot of time looking through every element of it. I'll recap it though on page ninety-eight. It's the one everybody kind of cares the most about, kind of says, hey, what happened? And do we have any issues, right? Do we have any findings? So as it relates to that, just a reminder, there's three kind of distinct areas of the audit. There's the financial statements, the the unaudited actuals that get brought to the board in August, September. We come in and we audit those for accuracy. There's the single audit, uniform guidance, federal awards. So all the federal money that comes into the district that gets spent does have to get looked at in accordance with those standards and an issued opinion for that. And then last but not least, California loves to have its compliance. So we have our wonderful state audit guide that, again, only gets added to every year. It doesn't ever seem to get taken away from. So there's a pretty lengthy opinion there as well. And so as it relates to those areas on page ninety-eight, for the financial statements, there were no findings, there were no adjustments, no issues. Everything was in accordance. The district was able to, you know, implement GASB ninety-six without any problems this year. For the federal awards, specifically the programs we looked at this year, you'll see referenced are your special education federal dollars as well as your education stabilization funds. So that's the COVID monies that came in for ESAR and GEAR. It's kind of the common terms you guys use. Again, with those, an unmodified opinion, no findings, no non-compliance, no issues to note as it related to those major programs under uniform guidance. And then last but not least, state compliance, again, an unmodified opinion. And so, like I said, if you want to kind of look at that opinion at any time, or I'm happy to go through it. You know, there's that lengthy list of what applied and what didn't. So what that is, is each year the state issues out their audit guide. Everything in there that's applicable to you as an entity is required to be looked at in accordance with what they tell us to look at. So as it relates to anything that applied to your district, again, we did not have any non-compliance or any issues to note. So, you know, no findings, no adjustments, you know, knock on wood for next time. Huge thank you to Rhonda and her whole team, as well as everybody at the district. I know it feels like we probably bother them the most, and I'm sure we do, but we obviously reach out to a lot of different people. And so we appreciate that they respect, you know, us trying to get our job done, even though it's not really part of their job. So thank you again for that. And I'm happy to hang out all night. I got nothing but time.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Any questions from board members? Martin?
So if it looks like this and it says non-reported?
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Does that mean that Rhonda did a really good job?
It does.
Okay. And then if it looks like this and it says non-reported, does that mean that Mr. Ike Purg did a really good job?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I could have been shorter. I thought I was.
Just want to make sure that's what it meant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Any member of the public would like to comment on item number thirteen? Now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. I like investigator, too.
Yeah.
It's really good, because we want that. I mean, that's, that's going to make us better as well. So thank you for being here. It's always a pleasure to work with with your staff when I, when I get the call. And mostly thank you for reaffirming the great work we already know that Ms. Sebert and her department are doing. So that's really, it gives, it gives us confidence and hopefully gives the community confidence in how we're spending the community's money.
Thank you.
Since there is no further comment, I will entertain a motion for approval and acceptance of item number thirteen.
I move approval acceptance of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three annual financial report for Luciemar Unified School District as prepared by Edie Bailey LLP Certified Public Accountants.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Brinier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Way to go.
Thank you. Which brings us to item number fourteen. Approval Acceptance Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Annual Financial Report from Luciemar Unified School District's General Obligation Bonds, Building Fund, Measure I, as prepared by Aid Bailey LLP Certified Public Accountants, Mr. Ike Purg.
Thank you, President Stewart. In addition to our audit for our district financials, we do also have Measure I audited as an independent audit each year as pursuant to Proposition Thirty-nine rules. And with that, I do have Mr. Gustafson.
I could do a little spin, like I just showed up again, but and again, some of you are familiar with, but if anybody who's not, you know, bonds can be issued under kind of different guidelines in California. One of those guidelines is Proposition Thirty-nine. If you do issue bonds and get an approval under that, there is that element of oversight that requires this audit. So a reminder, there's sort of two audits within this that you're looking at. One is strictly a financial statement audit. So while the district does undergo a financial statement audit and Measure I funds are within that district audit, this is specific to Measure I. So it's sort of broken out, looked at in a slightly different context, only in the context of Measure I, and then audited again, you know, potentially with different materiality levels and different risk assessments and things like that. So that's the first half of the audit. Again, no findings, no issues, no adjustments as it relates to the Measure I fund specifically. Second half, you'll see there is the performance audit. And this is really, you know, kind of what you'd consider like a compliance audit, where you need to spend the dollars in accordance with what the voters approved. You know, so if the voter said, build me a pool and you're building a rocket ship, you know, might not be what we're looking for. So we do look at that, what the voters approved, what was put in the ballots, things like that. And then we audit in accordance with not just state guidelines, but as well as that, and looking at the oversight committees and some of those elements. So on page nineteen, you'll kind of see the sampling of that. About sixty percent of your total expenditures were looked at this year by us. And again, no non-compliance, no issues with the performance audit. Everything that we looked at that was spent was spent in accordance with what it should have been done under Proposition Thirty-nine and including salaries. Sometimes there is a salary charge to that. There is OAG guidance on what allowable salaries are to be charged. So if your district did charge to that, that is something specific that we pull out and do look at no matter what to make sure that those employees are being charged to functions and jobs that are only really here to serve the purpose of Measure I and not to serve other purposes within the district. So as it relates to those, we do kind of specifically look at that element as well. And sometimes that's something that gets asked outside of that. Everything was in accordance with what it should be, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number fourteen, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment.
We're so good.
And again, I appreciate the, the work and the attention that you put in to reaffirm the great job that Mr. Stetson and his team is doing in sort of managing and overseeing this bond. So, great, thank you for that. If there are no further comments, I will entertain a motion for approval and acceptance of item number fourteen.
I move approval acceptance fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three annual financial report for Luciemar Unified School District General Obligation Bonds, Building Fund, Measure I, as prepared by Aid Bailey LLP Certified Public Accountants.
Again?
Motion by Mayor, second by Candell. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Brinier?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And thank you, Mr. Gustafson, for, for joining us. Have a safe travels home. Great, thank you. That moves us on to item number fifteen. Approval Fiscal Year 2023-2024 First Interim Financial Report, Mr. Ike Purg.
Thank you, President Stewart. Before I get started, I do want to just take a moment to thank Director Sebert and the Business Department for their continued dedication and attention to detail, as exemplified by turning our unaudited actuals from September into audited financial report with no adjustments. So again, huge thank you to Rhonda and the Business Department. So today I have for you the first interim budget. So we, as we recall from back in September, the odd, each one of our budget presentations is a snapshot in time. So today's theme will be snapshot in time as it relates to the current fiscal outlook. And this first interim captures any revenue changes from And, uh, this first interim captures any revenue changes from the budget that was approved by the board in June. And right now, meaning what we, what has changed in terms of our actual revenues and expenditures down as the audit said to the penny. So this evening, uh, just again, reiterating that amazing positive certification, uh, that is great news. What that means is not only are we fiscal solvent, is fiscally solvent in our current year, but we are also in our two out years as well. Again, highlighting those zero, uh, fiscal findings for our 2223 audit. And, uh, just the good fiscal stewardship of the board and the staff here in Luciemar. So now I get to the doom and gloom, right? Um, this evening I am going to share, uh, information from a variety of sources. And some of it's good, some of it's bad. You know, it's not going to be stellar when the good news is inflation is down to 3.2%. You might be wondering, well, 3.2%, that's, you know, above what the Fed looks at, at a 2% average. That's what the goal is. Say, well, what was the 10-year trend? Forbes says the 10-year, uh, inflation trend has been 1.88% per year. So this idea of 3.2, that's not too bad, but that's because we're, we're still reeling from that 9.1% year-over-year inflation that we felt in June. So while inflation is going down, we still feel those fiscal pressures. But what does that mean? Well, the LAO says it also means less financial withholdings. And this graph denotes the average or the actual, uh, amount that was withheld from people's paychecks. So if we think of those state taxes that they pull out right off the top on your, your check, this shows where those averages were in terms of monthly collections. Spoiler alert, uh, that does represent some foreshadowing for the revenues related to the 2223 year. They were down. See all those green bars down below zero? That's because, uh, the fiscal revenue for 2023 for the state was actually down 25% from where they had projected. So what does that mean? It means the state has $26 billion less in revenue that they have to work with for our current year budget. Meaning that 8.22% COLA was funded using one-time monies. Now, that's great news. We had a fully implemented 8.22% COLA. However, uh, the foreshadowing is that there are going to be not only constrictions to the state budget, uh, but the LAO is also predicting a $32 billion reduction in revenue. Um, so that is well above what they had initially thought. Uh, when we think about tax collection, how come we're standing here holding the bag? It's December and I'm sharing this news now. We should have had this information in April. Well, if we recall, the state delayed that personal income tax to October. And then they delayed it again until November. And ultimately what that's done is it, it has significantly impacted the actual, uh, estimates to the budget. Meaning they had been thinking the budget was going to be much rosier than it actually is. So what does that mean? Well, again, actual revenue for 22, uh, 23 was a 20% drop. So when we think of the actual revenue drop, okay, that gives us a new starting point. Well, so how do we look to the future? That's where it gets really murky. So the LAO is actually forecasting some variance. Meaning they aren't quite sure, nor are economists from the Anderson School. Uh, or BICMAT, School Services, they're not quite sure. There's some estimates, but for LAO, that variance is only plus or minus $15 billion for the state. For 2324. And you know, 2425, don't worry, that variance plus or minus $30 billion. Meaning that graph is, you see that gray area grow, they are not certain what the economy is going to do. Good news, uh, when we look at other economic indicators, the economy is still performing strong. Doesn't necessarily impact however Prop 98. So that graph on the right represents the educational forecast. Meaning looking at the blue, that is the 2324 enacted budget. Governor's budget, what we, uh, thought as a piece of that pie. Remember Prop 98, it's a big pie of money and education typically gets 40%. Well, because those state revenues are so much lower, that red bar indicates the minimum fiscal guarantee under Prop 98. Meaning there is a 9.1 billion dollar deficit from the 2223 and an additional 6.3 billion dollar deficit for 2324. Smaller deficit looking out at 2425. However, again, that's that plus or minus variance that most economists are uncertain about. So what does that mean for us? Well, good news, the state does have 8.1 billion in that Prop 98, uh, rainy day fund of which they could pull out up to 7.7 billion. Uh, they also have the ability to address this, uh, funding gap by revisiting some of those one-time grants and things. Uh, when listening to the LAO's presentation last week, they did share that one of the tools in the governor's toolbox would be to reevaluate actually allocating some of those funds that had been promised, but hadn't actually made it to school districts yet. So, uh, there are always other tools that are available for the, the government to bal- balance their budgets as it relates to, uh, funding. This, uh, slide you have right here is the School Services of California dartboard. So this is, if we were going to call one document the holy grail for building a budget, this is it, right? And you'll notice the, the green, that's looking at our out years. Those highlighted red boxes denote some changes or concerns. So for 2425, when the board built and approved its budget, there was an anticipated 3.94% COLA for the 2425 school year. Right now, there are some variants on what the governor is going to change that estimated COLA to be in January. We do however, know that it is not going to be 3.94. The LAO's current estimate, I don't want to steal from my own thunder, but it is, uh, significantly lower than that 3.94. And while there are not accounts to what the 2526, uh, COLA could be adjusted to, there is a lot of discussion from economists that, that will most likely go down as well. The PERS box is highlighted. You might be going, why, why is the PERS box highlighted? Uh, that's because the PERS board, uh, a week and a half ago, they changed the district contribution for PERS. And I, I, I do not want to complain too much about PERS and STIRS because I as well am going to be looking forward to retirement someday in the very, very, very distant future. Not quite as fortunate as, uh, Mrs. Dwight, uh, but I do know that, that, that PERS district contribution helps pay, uh, the retiree benefits. Well, the PERS board as their investments don't do as well, or there are more people drawing on the system, they have to readjust what the district contribution is. And those three boxes are highlighted because those three out years, PERS is planning on increasing the district contribution by, uh, a half a percent spread out amongst those three years. So that will be an impact to the budget. It is not included in this first interim budget because that information was out well after, uh, the budget, uh, interim had been developed. So BICMAT, uh, and School Services, they concur with the LAO. So there it is. The LAO is estimating a 1.27 COLA. Uh, when you look at potential COLA, that's actually good. And when LAO is actually saying a higher COLA than potentially what School Services and BICMAT say, that is a cause for caution. So this just shows different scenarios, looking at the, the GDP, the gross domestic product for the nation, because that is how COLA is set, right? They look at inflation rates, they look at the cost of fuel, they look at a number of things and they use that GDP as an indicator for how each quarter goes and that plays into the COLA. So those three different estimates are just based on how those last three question marks turn out. We will know more in January and then, uh, we'll know even more when there's the whole budget act and they actually approve a budget. So more to come, but this is just so that you understand, we have to pay attention to these numbers because the difference of going from that 3.94 COLA down to the LAO's estimated 1.27% is approximately, and I use the ballpark, $7 million for our district. For the 2425 school year as a decline in revenue. So it's important that we put a dollar amount to that, knowing that we have to be prepared for that. So declining enrollment. I have two slides on this. The first, uh, denotes the declining enrollment for the state all the way back to 2004. So you'll notice it's been a steady decline all the way to 2022, 23. And then there's this, we think it's still going to decline, but we don't know what that trend line is going to look like yet. Ultimately, uh, this is a trend that we have experienced, not only at a state level or a county level, but here in Luciemar. So good news, I have updated this from the 45-day, uh, revise and unaudited actuals. You'll notice that number went up a tiny bit. So our Cbeds number actually did come up slightly higher and our change was 29 students to the good. Meaning instead of declining 150 students per year, uh, which was the assumption and average we've been using, we actually went up a little bit. Now there, uh, might be the, the question, well, if we're up this year, why doesn't our trend reverse the other way and us show growth next year? Cause we don't know if this is an anomaly yet. When we look at the 10 years of decline that averaged a total of 121 students down each year for that 10 years. Or the 164 average in 21 to 23, we have to be cautious not knowing, was this just a really good year? Or are we seeing some residual bump because of students coming back to the district after leaving during COVID? So, uh, this number for our Cbeds, uh, that number is good. However, we still have to watch not only our enrollment trend through the rest of the year, but we'll also be paying very close attention to our, our attendance as well. So what's the summary? Inflation, not great, not as terrible as it was. Things to consider though. When we think about fuel, electricity, food prices, those cost pressures haven't gone down, meaning it still hurts at the pump. It still hurts at the grocery store and we are still seeing, uh, some minor inflation in those areas. Housing and car sales are down, stocks are down, startup IPOs are down. Why are those important? Well, when we think about our revenue streams, taxes, sales tax, property tax. Those are our key sources of revenue as a state and ultimately as a district. Hiring challenges continue and one might say that could play into a little bit about that, the state's, uh, revenue source de- declining a little bit when we think about our personal income tax, that is one of the big three. If we're not able to find someone to hire, that person that's not there is not paying taxes. So, uh, there is some speculation that the, the job market itself could also be, uh, contributing a little bit to the personal income tax dip. So ultimately, every single fiscal agency that I have, uh, been able to find any information on about guesses for the COLA, every single one says anticipate a restriction and reductions with the COLA for the 2425 and possibly again for the 2526. So that is represented, uh, represented in the multi-year budget in terms of us accounting for that. So is it good? Is it bad? Is it ugly? If I had to flip a coin, I'd say it's somewhere between bad and ugly, but I don't want to call it out yet. Uh, when we look at the COLA, that 8.22 phenomenal. In fact, that was the highest COLA since 1979. Just to put it in perspective, the average COLA during the previous 20 years, 2.8%. Now, when we think about the, the COLA and we think about, well, what does that really mean for funding? That graph on that bottom right-hand corner shows, hey, this is what it could look like for our projected revenues based on a COLA going down to 1% for the 2425 school year. You'll notice I use an average. So the funding per ADA at 11,500, that's an average for the grade spans. So between TK through 12, that's a, pretty much middle of the road. If we had only a hundred students, I know we have well more than, uh, much more than that. Easy math, right? A hundred students at that base funding, we would have 1,000,000, 150,000 in terms of revenue. If we apply that COLA of 1% between the 2324, if we lost one student, we would have an increase of $115 per ADA, but that loss of one student would actually net a revenue decrease for the district. So this talk of even if we get COLA, if we get money, just because we get it, we still have to take into account enrollment and ADA. So our multi-year, uh, what's changed since the 45-day revise? Revenues slightly down. We talked about that back in September. Enrollment up. Average daily attendance up. Our UPP or unduplicated pupil, uh, percentage, that's up also slightly, which is good news. That helps our supplemental concentration, some of our title funds. It's good news. What's not good news? Utilities costs. So meaning the cost of electricity, costs of electric. Uh, our, our propane to run our buses almost doubled in the last year. And then we look at, uh, the one-time grant loss. There's a lot of these things that do continue to impact the budget. They are all captured in this snapshot in time or multi-year. What's going to change now, this snapshot to second interim in March? These three things. If I was a wagering man, which I'm not, these three things would change. We don't know the COLA projection, so it's likely that that's going to be somewhere in that ballpark of 1 to 1.27%. Enrollment ADA, we have our Cbeds number positive, that's good. Our ADA is probably going to change. Right now, our attendance through, uh, month three, when we last looked at it, was at 94.5%. Give or take, really good. What we have seen is there's still, we haven't hit the flu season yet. We haven't hit that time where people take the extra day or two, even though they're not supposed to around holidays. So we are anticipating that ADA changing a little bit, uh, but we will monitor that very closely between now and that second interim. And then lastly, we don't know what inflation is going to do or, uh, how the Federal Reserve is going to react. Hopefully they, um, will lay off the, the tightening of interest rates for a little while still. So what does that mean, uh, in terms of the actual assumptions? The only thing that changed was those two green boxes for our current year changes were up students. And we changed our ADA slightly, meaning we tweaked that, uh, from back in June, the board, uh, was comfortable with a 93% attendance ADA yield. Uh, we increased it slightly, looking at a three-year trend, looking at that post-COVID. We've been going up somewhere, uh, between a half percent. We've been going up somewhere between a half percent, quarter percent. It does change a little bit, but we felt comfortable refining our ADA up a little bit to have more accurate revenues. So what does that mean? Good news, our multi-year shows that we do still have additional reserves for economic uncertainty. So one thing that I would like to point out, that it would be the third orange highlighted box down three-quarters or two-thirds of the way down the page, where it says assigned reduction of 24-25 COLA from 3.94% to 1%. I want to be very transparent, right? We are planning for that 24-25 COLA to be reduced. So that number will probably change a little bit. However, this assigned amount of monies will protect us when it does drop, meaning that reserve for economic uncertainty at the bottom, that is with setting aside money for that reduced COLA, meaning we know that reduced COLA is coming, we're planning for it, and we still have additional reserves for economic uncertainties. So what that means ultimately is we are sitting at a very positive budget at this snapshot in time. And I know the question's going to come, so I'm going to answer it on the front end. How much does it cost for one-month payroll? Would I beat you to it? Who would ask that? Right now, snapshot in time, that one-month payroll costs approximately $8.5 million, meaning that whole reserve from the current year, that's one month. So just to put it in perspective, that is the cost of one-month salary. But, good news, positive certification. And this does speak to that, we have 3% reserves this year and our two out-years, but it does also speak to the importance of fiscal stewardship, meaning that the board, as well as all of our educational partners, continue to be frugal and pay attention to what they're spending money on. Make sure you're turning off those lights when you're leaving a room, and don't buy something just to spend money. Really be purposeful about how we're expending our monies. Now, moving forward, what does that mean we need to do? Next step, second interim will come in March. In January, we will be bombarded with estimates related to the governor's budget, and we will start our negotiations with our labor partners and continue to refine the budget, meaning watching those one-time spendings and knowing that they had been reduced current year, and then again, monitoring our ADA and our enrollment. So, how does that tie to facilities? So earlier, we did have an audit that went over our Measure I funds. I thought this would be a great time to spend just a couple minutes. It will only take me a half hour, I promise, just kidding. This is going to be quick, just as an overview, and I wanted to tie it to our first interim, because as we spend down Measure I, any of those projects that are started not finished, if we don't have money in Fund 25 or our developer fees, then those projects get finished with general fund dollars. So it's important to show that connection between these projects that are looking awesome, by the way, and the budget. So this picture right here, I had to start with culinary. I know we had the salon opening and culinary feeding us, I will say, the flatbread was phenomenal. But they are going to be moving into a state-of-the-art facility. And just to put it in perspective, it's going to be 3,136 feet, teaching classroom, teaching kitchen, and outdoor seating area with a price tag of $4.3 million. Now, the benefit, there was a competitive CTE grant, and the state is matching 1.8 million. So that stewardship of fiscal, of our monies and the direction of Executive Director Stenson, those state-matching dollars are really important, because it has allowed Measure I to go that much further than it would have if we weren't smart about how we use our expenditures and how the board takes action. But I don't want to spoil that, I'll talk about that a little later. Judkins, if you haven't seen it yet, the walls are on, they were working on the roof the other day. This is another one of our projects, estimated cost was 3.5 million, and it does include four classrooms and one new staff restroom. With some delays, we are still anticipating it being finished this school year. However, it will be very late in the school year, we're anticipating around a June completion. Fair Grove, I did also want to include some information about asphalt. And you might be saying, well, that's not something that people look at and go, yeah, we're fixing asphalt. Well, I wanted to put a price tag on it. This dilapidated asphalt, which will be replaced over winter break, has a price tag of $370,000 for rip and replace. So the areas in red and that little yellow area, that is $370,000 to remove the old asphalt and have new. So when we think about those other things that Measure I has paid for, it's not having rolled ankles for our students, it's having a flat basketball court or foursquare that our students are able to play on as a play surface as well. So thought it was worthy of highlighting, great news, and I do have to pause on this one. If you haven't seen this plan set, this is Grover Heights, and it's six classrooms. And I do want to take a second, because this plan is also going to be before you as a contract approval, a little bit later this evening. And this one's here to highlight the fact that this project is moving forward over winter break because of one employee's extra effort. And I do have to take a second to thank Mr. Stenson. Why would I be taking the time to thank you? Let's see. A drive down to LA to sit at DSA, waiting for someone who could figure out why this project hadn't been approved yet. So that means sitting in the office of DSA when they open, being polite to the secretary and waiting and waiting and waiting. And two hours later, when the head of DSA comes in bouncing and getting an appointment that day to have him look into it that day. And next thing you know, a day later, we have the actual letter for approval, because he got ahold of that person that was at home on leave, not working, and that plan set was sitting somewhere. So this project is actually going to be able to begin with the board's approval over winter break. Why is that important? Because you look at this great facility, and you realize the distance to the classroom it's next to and the overexcavation that will be occurring over winter break, it was imperative that this project started. So awesome to be able to highlight, you'll have an opportunity to approve a little later this evening. I do have two other projects on here that are sitting in DSA, they have not been sitting in DSA as long, but they are big projects. Ocean View is getting six new classrooms, four, that long row, that's four regular classrooms. The bottom two that are slightly behind on the bottom right-hand side, those are Kinder or TK jumbo classrooms that have a shared bathroom in the middle. The price tag for this project, 6 million, and as soon as it's approved in DSA, hopefully, late spring, we'll be able to start moving forward on that project. The last project I wanted to highlight this evening is Napomo High School. And you might be looking at those pictures going, gosh, what do those have to do with each other? Well, the picture in the middle is the door that you see on the outside of the building. The two pictures on the sides, that's what's inside it. Meaning Napomo High School has an extremely complicated pillar system that is how it cools all of the stick-built buildings. That system is failing. So what is the price tag for replacing a non-functional HVAC system? When you add the required 400,000 to improve the fire alarm system as part of this DSA project, it brings the estimated construction cost up to $3 million. So this is a project that is sitting in DSA, and as soon as we get the approval from DSA, this will likely be a project that comes to the board for approval in the future. Which brings us to questions from the board related to the first interim budget and/or an approval of said budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ikeperker. Questions from board members? Martin?
I have a question going back into your report under the SSC Financial Projection Dart Board. You had two items that were identified in red, the DOF planning COLA and the CalPERS employer rate. I like percentages, but I also like dollar figures, just like our, I like our, knowing it's 8.5 million for a month of salary. So this is showing a projection for our contribution for CalPERS as 1% over three years. What does 1% look like at our district? Do you know?
So the cost of 1% is approximately 1.1 million, and that's back of a napkin math.
Okay, so you're saying an additional half million each year added on about?
Yes, and what I had shared was those were the amounts that were set at budget adoption. They are going to be going up in 24-25. That 2.7 is going to move up to 2.7, or I'm sorry, 27.7 is going to move up to 27.8. That column 25-26, that column is also going to increase. It is going to move from the 28.3 up to 28.5. And then the 26-27, that column is also going to be going up 2.2 points. So that's going to go up to 28.9 for the 26-27.
So we're at 28.668 now.
Yes.
So you're talking more than 2% up. Yeah.
By the time of the full multi-year, yes.
Okay, so ballpark, show here, counting 1.1%.
Or one, it's approximately, and I said back of the napkin, 1.1 million per percent.
Thank you, and I appreciate you front-loading me with the 8.5 million.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Any other questions from board members? Just out of curiosity, when it comes to enrollment, do we think that TK is at play here in terms of helping those numbers increase?
Excellent question, and that is an area where we have seen a lot of growth. We have, I don't have the number in front of me, I was looking at it today, too. It's over 300 students, I want to say it was somewhere in the 320s in terms of TK. And all of our students in our district, we have only enrolled at the age where they're eligible, meaning we didn't do the early enrollment option, and there were a couple reasons why. Ultimately, that is an increase to our district enrollment. We are also seeing just areas where we had seen drop-offs in the past, that there's not those same levels of, say, Exodus as seniors. Our numbers as a whole have been much more rounded.
Great to hear, thank you. Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number 15, now would be the time to do so. Mr. King?
Thank you. So my only question on this slide, I'm not sure why the 24-25 possible reduction COLA is showing on 23-24, it seems like it would only be on the out-years. Hoping for verification if.
So the excellent question, that 7 million, it's a reserve across the multi-years, meaning it's being reserved once. When we look at the ending fund balance, it's not reducing it 7 million each year in all of the out-years. It's accounting for that reduction. The total cost for the multi-year is a $7 million reduction. I can work to hone that for the next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ikeperker. Are there any other public comments on this item? Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Stenson, for driving down there. And we really appreciate all those Measure I construction improvements. And obviously, we're going to be waiting for more information, and I hope the state never again ever postpones tax due date. It's put everyone in a bind, it's really been silly. I don't see that the benefits outweigh the negative on it, so.
That was federal that postponed it. California didn't agree to postpone it the extra month until like six hours later.
Yeah.
To conform, so we'd like to know why the federal government did that.
Is there any talk in the revenue stream and why the income tax is down so much about the effect of the sec after-strike on this?
That's interesting. I did read one article that implied that the writers and actors' strike caused an impact to the income tax withholdings, meaning all of those people that work within that industry weren't being paid, weren't paying taxes. So that definitely, at least one article did reference that.
Seeing no other comments from board members, I will entertain a motion for approval of item number 15.
I'll move approval fiscal year 2023, 2024, first interim financial report. Second.
Motion by Candell, second by Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Which moves us to item number 14, approval, or 16, rather, thank you. Approval, appointment of members to the Independent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Measure I. Mr. Ikeperker?
Thank you. So as we spoke about during the audit of Measure I, it does qualify under Proposition 39, and it requires the bond to be passed at 55% or more and have a citizens' bond oversight committee. Having members that had termed out, this is an opportunity for us to infuse with some new citizen bond oversight members. And ultimately, the board is required to have a minimum of seven individuals. However, in the past, we have had many more than that. This does represent the applicants, meaning people that are interested in providing oversight to our Measure I bond.
Thank you, Mr. Ikeperker. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number 16, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment.
I just have a comment, it's sad that nobody from Grover or let's see, yeah, applied for this. O'Roy, Randy, you know, Napomo, Ocean, and Pisma.
Heard. Any other comments from board members? I'll just publicly thank the people that are willing to step up and serve.
True.
Right, and help us with the oversight. Seeing as there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion for approval of item number 16.
Move approval of appointment of members of the Independent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Commissioner?
Aye.
Aye, second.
Motion by Santos, second by Naomi Bernier. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
President?
Aye.
So the motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Moving on to item number 17. Approval, award of contract to RDZ Contractors, Inc. as general contractor at Grover Heights Elementary School for new classroom wing project number 0563 out of Bond Fund 21. Mr. Ikeperker?
So I did allude to this project a little earlier when I was thanking Mr. Stenson for driving down to DSA. The reason why it was touch and go was state-match money. So part of the reason why you were able to have this in front of you today is because we received the DSA approval order. For any of our projects to qualify for state-match money, of which this project does, a few things have to happen. First, it has to get the DSA stamp of approval, and then in terms of order And then, in terms of order, very important, then the board approves the contract. So this is very exciting that we received the DSA approval letter and that this is before you this evening. Because that over excavation I was talking about is next to a third-grade classroom. Ten feet from where the digging is going to begin, and with your approval this evening, uh, they would be able to get as much done before we return back from winter break on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Ike Perker. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number seventeen, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for final comment. Thank you, Mr. Stenson.
I was gonna say, as someone who's lived near a jackhammer for like ten months at my workplace, I, there were days I couldn't decide if it was the bad choir of the jackhammer that was driving me crazy. But the combination of the two definitely did. So thank you for thinking of our students first.
Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of item number seventeen.
I move approval, award of contract to RDZ Contractors, Inc. As general contractor at Grover Heights Elementary School for new classroom wing project number oh five six three, Bond Fund Twenty-One. Second.
Motion by Martin, second by mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, which moves us to item number eighteen. Discussion, first reading of initial proposal for collective bargaining from the Luciarmar Unified School District to the Luciarmar Unified Teachers Association for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four negotiations. Dr. Handy.
Thank you, President Stewart. As I've said multiple times before, but we have some new visitors in the audience, I'll go ahead and share it all again. Government Code thirty-five forty, commonly known as the RADA Act or EERA, governs employer-employee relations for California public school employees. Section thirty-five forty-seven specifically states meeting and negotiating shall not take place until after the proposals have been presented to the public, which is a two-step process. The sunshine clause of the RADA Act requires that each party's initial bargaining proposal, the topics of which will be negotiated, be presented for public comment at a publicized school board meeting prior to the beginning of the negotiation process. The public must be given a reasonable time to consider the proposal, comment publicly, and then comments are considered at a subsequent meeting of the governing board. Luciarmar Unified Teachers Association has sunshine. This is our district's proposal. We present it with the accompanying initial proposal for collective bargaining, and in, uh, respective time, I'll highlight the articles. But if you'd like me to outline the details, I'll be happy to do that. Article five, general policies governing leaves of absence. Article six, hours of work. Article eight, transfers and reassignments. Article fourteen, salaries, and article seventeen, term of the agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Handy. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number eighteen, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. Seeing none, this is a discussion item and a first reading. We will see this again at our January meeting. Thank you, Dr. Handy, which brings us to item number nineteen. Approval, agreement between the Luciarmar Unified School District and Maryville University to provide fieldwork placements for College of Health Profession candidates. Dr. Handy.
Thank you, President Stewart. Um, wanted to just highlight that we continue to have individuals who want to do their practicum in Luciarmar. We're a fantastic district, and we know that. So Maryville University's College of Health Profession is desirous of obtaining a relationship with Luciarmar Unified School District in order to provide clinical education, fieldwork, and/or clinical practicum for students enrolled in its physical therapy, occupational therapy, communication sciences and disorders program, and/or speech and language pathology program. A component of the program calls for MU students to participate in these learning experiences under the supervision of qualified personnel. The learning experiences include that clinical education, fieldwork, or clinical practicum at schools and in classrooms in the Luciarmar Unified School District. The assigned district representative is responsible for ongoing communication with the university, as well as the designation of district employees responsible for direct supervision of assigned students during their clinical program. Excuse me, practicum. A current student enrolled in their speech and language pathology program, an area of great need for our district, uh, specifically approached Luciarmar Unified School District, is requesting a partnership to permit them to participate in the aforementioned clinical learning experiences, and this one will actually be at Judkins Medical Middle School. And we anticipate that the implementation upon the board's approval will begin in January twenty twenty-four. The district enters into this agreement for one year only. This is atypical, but it's because we also have an agreement with them to allow one of our agency SLPs to provide the foresee, um, foresees, uh, supervision that's also required.
Thank you, Dr. Handy. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number nineteen, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval, um, for the agreement between the Luciarmar Unified School District and Maryville University to provide fieldwork placements for College of Health Profession candidates. Second.
Motion by, uh, mayor, second by Martin. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Which brings us to item number twenty. Approval, second reading, revision of board policies, administrative regulations, and exhibit. Dr. Fawcett.
Thank you, President Stewart. This is the second reading of the board policies, administrative regulations, and exhibits. Um, it's recommended that you prove them here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number twenty, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment to bring it back to the board for comment.
I'm glad we saw this twice. Lengthy.
A lot of readings. Seeing no further comment, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval, second reading, revision of board policies, administrative regulations, and exhibit. Second.
Go ahead.
Motion by Candell, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, which brings, my actor voice, uh, which brings us to item number twenty-one. First reading, revision of board policy administrative, administrative regulation and exhibits. Dr. Fawcett.
Thank you, President Stewart. Um, this is the first reading of a board policy, um, administrative regulation and exhibit. I'm here for your review, and, um, these have been vetted by CSBA, um, and staff would review them as well. Um, the board policy in front of you tonight is forty thirty, nondiscrimination in employee, employment, excuse me, um, and exhibit forty-one, one-two-point-nine, employee notifications. Um, and then there's two more repeats of that, um, just variations in the human resource, um, exhibits. And then the administrative regulation four-two-one-eight, dismissal, suspension, disciplinary action, um, there before you tonight for your review. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. Questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number twenty-one, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment. Seeing none, this is a first reading. It is our policy to have, uh, board policies, uh, read twice. So we will see this again at the January meeting for a second reading and, uh, possible approval. Which brings us to item number twenty-two, uh, uh, action on student disciplines, uh, expulsion, student discipline case numbers twenty-three dash twenty-four dash zero one eight and twenty-three dash twenty-four dash zero one nine. Ms. Martin?
Agreements and stipulations for immediate expulsion with suspended enforcement. The Board of Education finds there is cause to expel from all schools in the district student cases twenty-three, twenty-four, zero one eight for violation of Education Code Section forty-eight nine hundred A one and twenty-three, twenty-four, zero one nine for violation of Education Code Sections forty-eight nine hundred C. It is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plans, and readmission review dates as set forth in November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three and November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, agreements and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor? President Stewart?
Aye, thank you. Motion passes. Which brings us to item number twenty-three. Approval, the annual organization of the Board of Education. Dr. Fawcett.
Thank you, President Stewart. This is quite a lengthy item, so bear with me. I'm going to read an introductory statement, and then we'll go through the reorganization process. Um, so, and according to Education Code thirty-five, one-four-three and AB two-four-four-nine, the governing board's organizational meeting must take place on or after the second Friday in December following an election. In years with no election, the same timeframe applies. As you know, there are several, several routine but important actions that are part of the organizational procedure. We will work through them one at a time, um, and there are a few things that I'd like you to keep in mind as we progress through the meeting. Um, when we are nominating a, a member for a position, it only takes one nomination. It does not need to be seconded, whether you're nominating yourself or another trustee. Um, and if there are two or more candidates that have been nominated, um, when we do a roll call vote, you will announce the candidate that you're in support of. And I will remind you when we get to that part of the meeting as well. So any questions so far? Okay, so moving on. So first, uh, item of action is adoption of previous actions of the Board of Education. It's recommended that the board adopt, and as, as policy and regulation of the Board of Education, all previous actions taken. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, second by trustee Santos. Roll call vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor? President Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, designation of authorized representatives. It is recommended that the superintendent, Paul Fawcett, be designated as the authorized representative of the Board of Education, assigned to perform all duties and execute all documents as outlined and directed by the statutes and by the policies and regulations of the Board of Education, including authority to certify applications for categorical federal and state funds, plus any other public law programs approved by the governing board. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
So moved by trustee Santos, second by trustee mayor. Roll call vote.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Pass. All right, here we go. Authorization for specific functions. It is recommended that the board authorize the following signatures for the functions indicated below. All district functions, all county school functions, all state of California functions, and all scholarships CD account functions. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion by trustee Bernier, seconded by trustee Candell. Roll call vote.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, next up, establish time and place of regular meetings. It is recommended that the board accept the recommendation as presented in the proposed calendar and establish the date, time, and place of the twenty twenty-four calendar year regular meetings of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Santos, seconded by trustee mayor. Roll call vote.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, now we're proceeding to the part of the meeting where we move to elect board officers. So just a quick reminder, when nominating oneself or a fellow member, a second motion is not required. When voting for positions with two or more candidates, board members must call out the name of the candidate they are supporting. Any questions before we proceed? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. So we are calling for the election of a president. One member is to be elected as president. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Colleen Martin.
Any other nominations? All right, Colleen Martin has been nominated. Roll call vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Santos? Mayor?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations, trustee Martin. President Martin, may I say. Well done. All right, so next up, election of the vice president. According to board bylaws, one member is to be elected as vice president who shall serve as chairman in the absence of the president. Do I have any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Don Stewart.
Any other nominations? All right, see no other nominations, so that motion was made by trustee Martin. Roll call vote.
Martin?
Don Stewart.
That's it, yeah. Continue around, please.
Naomi Bernier?
No.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes, aye, thanks.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Vice President Stewart. All right, next up, election of the clerk. According to bylaws, one member is to be elected as clerk. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate, uh, Ms. Candell.
Any other nominations? All right, trustee Santos has nominated trustee Candell. Uh, we do need a roll call vote to formalize it.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Congratulations, Clerk Candell. Okay, moving on to item number eight. Appointment of official school district representative to the annual governing board's representatives meeting um, in slow CSBA liaison representative. The board should elect one of its members to be the voting representative to the annual governing board representative meetings, which is normally held between October and December annually and may be held after slow CSBA annual fall dinner meeting. The district representative's only responsibility is to help select members of the county committee on the school districts' organization. It is appropriate to also name a liaison representative to the San Luis Obispo County School Board Association. This individual representative represents the governing board, um, at executive board meetings of slow CSBA. Many districts automatically name the same person to both positions, and we have done that in the past, and it has most recently been trustee Martin. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Ms., uh, Nikki Mayor.
Any other nominations? Trustee Santos nominated trustee mayor. Um, roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Pam? President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and then board volunteers up to, excuse me, board representatives to the Central California Schools Financing Authority. Um, Central California Schools Financing Authority is the JPA between Luciarmar Unified School District and San Luis Coastal Unified School District, established in nineteen ninety, related to the property in Price Canyon. A vote for appointment of one representative is requested. Um, it is currently trustee Candell, and it's a very short meeting.
I nominate trustee Candell again.
Any other nominations? All right, so trustee Martin nominated trustee Candell. Roll call vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, and the final item of the reorganization meeting. Board volunteers up to two for the Wall of Fame Naming Facilities Committee. The superintendent may on occasion establish a naming, um, facility or wall of fame committee to review suggestions and make recommendations, um, to the superintendent and then to the school board. The superintendent, after careful review, may bring, uh, the person's recommendations for the board consideration. If there is interest from any members, um, to be observers, up to two volunteers may be considered uh, this evening for the meetings to be held in the upcoming year. This is the superintendent's citizen advisory committee in accordance with board policy. Um, it currently is trustee Candell and trustee Stewart. Um, and I'm looking for two volunteers now that we can nominate.
Who you can nominate, so, but I think I see it's this.
I'll volunteer.
This fam and this Santos.
All right, so trustee fam and trustee Santos had volunteered for this position. Uh, we could do a quick roll call vote to formalize it.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, which brings us, uh, and thank you all for your willingness to serve. Which brings us, uh, and thank you all for willing to serve and step up. I, I greatly appreciate it. Uh, that brings us to public comment on items not on the agenda. Thank you for your patience. This is a longer meeting than we've typically had. Um, uh, uh, before we get started, uh, just Dr. Handy will be the timekeeper on this. And you'll see there's a device that goes from green to yellow to red. When the device gets to red, that, just please wrap up your comments. That'll be the end of your three minutes. Uh, first up, and I, I have three speaker cards, but if anybody else, if I don't have your card, you want to speak, just, just give that to Ms. Luhan, and she'll get it passed up to me. I have, uh, Cynthia Bodger, followed by Carmen Morales Board, followed by Ashley, I'm sorry, you can base guess. Thank you.
Hi, y'all. My name's Cynthia Bodger, and I just want to say a little bit about the Dana Reserve. That's not on your agenda that I see in the future, but it may come before you. Um, it's a big development that's being planned in Napomo across from the high school. And, um, I've been working with a, on a volunteer basis with the Napomo Action Committee, which is a group of people, um, in the community have come together, gathered four thousand signatures against the development, raised a bunch of money to try to stop it, and we have a, a bunch of other allies in the community who agree with our perspective, such as the California Native Plant Society, Eco Slow, the Sierra Club, League of Women Voters, not to mention the Northern Schumash Tribal Council. And we just want to support the school district and maintain the quality of your schools and your high standards of education. And we're concerned that this development will line the pockets of the developer and leave hundreds of students high and dry. Um, I, you have been given a copy, I believe, of a letter by your superintendent to the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. This letter is dated September twenty-seventh. I have extra copies if you don't know what happened to it. And, um, he, I just want to highlight a couple of things in this letter that you've already gotten a copy of. And that said, he says that our schools lack sufficient capacity to absorb the new students that will come out of this development, which is something like four hundred and fifty elementary students, hundred fifty middle school, and about a hundred fifty high school students. And, um, I'm still green, yeah. Um, and it seems like, uh, since Napomo High School can absorb these students, but Mesa Middle School, uh, Napomo Elementary and Dana Elementary will require significant expansions. And the projected infrastructure cost is about twelve million dollars, resulting even in a, almost a seven million dollar shortfall, even after considering statutory school fees. And if some of the, uh, thirteen hundred new residential units are, uh, not designated as fifty-five and older, then the required expenditure will be about eighteen million dollars, leading to a nine million dollar deficit post-statutory school fee deductions. So this is a problem. And, um, the Planning Commission has authorized a community-led alternative panel to meet and make suggestions to the Board of Supervisors. And we're going to come up with a modified design, and we will be supporting issues specific to Luciamar School District, including reasonable reduction of density to lower these impacts, save transit route to schools, and we will be looking for additional input from your superintendent before we present our plan to the Board of Supervisors. Just letting y'all know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bodger. Next up, Ms. Morales Board.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address your board. My name is Carmen Morales Board, and I'm a retired nurse practitioner and public health nurse, and also a member of the Napomo Action Committee, whose goal is to educate the public about the impacts that the proposed Dana Reserve project will have on our community. According to the final E I R, several unmitigated and crucial issues have been identified, including the negative air effect on air quality and increased air pollution, which will be significant. As a nurse, I know that exposure to polluted air has serious health impacts for children. Children's respiratory rates are higher than adults, so they breathe in more dirty air. Their lungs are still developing, therefore their lungs cannot develop properly. And because of this, the risk for chronic lung disease increases substantially. When children are exposed to air pollution, they cannot breathe, they cannot learn, they cannot go outside and play. They cannot achieve their full potential. The asthma rate for Napomo for children and teens is up from four-point-six percent to eight-point-nine percent. I don't need to tell you what that does for healthcare costs, E R visits, school days lost, and the overall health and well-being of Napomo's youth. Our community deserves better. Our children deserve better. Our educators deserve better. Educators and school staff should not have to have the added responsibility of making sure that even more students get their asthma inhaler treatments. We, as a community of parents, grandparents, and concerned citizens, should not allow the developers and those who make planning decisions for Napomo burden our residents with exposures to air pollutants and the negative health consequences. Please do not support the Dana Reserve project as it is currently proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales Board. And next up is Ashley.
Board members and other attendees of this meeting, I am Colby Schmidt, Vice President of the Eco Robotics Team and Vice President of the A P Scholars Club. I have also been a, been a member of the H H S G S A Club for the past three years, and I'm currently a reporter for the Eagle Times Newspaper and a senior at H H S.
As a senior H H, President of the A P Scholars Club, the Vice President of the I have been part of the Associated Student Council and part of could you speak in the mic so we could hear, please? You. Just saying that I'm very involved in school.
Today, we have come to bring awareness to the recent occurrences of the protest on December sixth. Uh, and we hope to raise awareness towards the fact that someone with no relation to the high school is attempting to influence the action of the school against the wishes of many students and parents. Gaye Powell represents an existential threat to our wonderful school of H H S. By taking advantage of our substitutes and their lack of knowledge in the safety procedures placed by the school, she gained access to the H H S library to take pictures of books she deemed to be inappropriate and pornographic in content, bringing the concern to our principal, Brad Grumbles. These books were taken out of the library and then later returned after careful examination by a board of community members and experts. Despite the security risk this poses, our investigations have determined that it was, by and large, a huge, uh, freak accident where a bunch of things went wrong.
Bluster.
By the security risk this poses, the main issue is the concerns to, uh, the emotional health of our L G B T Q plus students. By coming onto campus and attempting to remove books that exhibit L G B T Q plus themes, along with her recent protest on Wednesday, December sixth, she is eroding the aura of safety and acceptance students and faculty have worked for years to cultivate, as shown today on December twelfth, with the attack of multiple G S A members by other students who threw food at them. This, uh, shows a concerning turn, uh, with the general consensus of students on campus.
This has not only violated multiple California state laws by, uh, filming minors and uh, showing pornographic material that she deemed to be pornographic, which was not. But in addition to that, she showed photographs of, um, gender-affirmant surgeries that were graphic in themselves. Um, Gaye Powell has violated the laws of California and acted against the stated laws and interests of those who she claims to protect, and given the violent misinformation about H H S curriculum and its practices to her supporters and community at large. She has been a threat to this school and represents a danger to the safe places of trans students of our school. One that should be protected and welcoming to all, to all students. Gaye Powell should have not been the wake-up call for students, staff, and the community that no one's belief is above any others, and the students' rights should not be taken away just because they think differently. And the hearing of knowledge of students should not be silenced.
Thank you so much.
You for waiting.
Yeah, thank you for waiting, and thank you for giving up your Tuesday night to be here. Uh, you're, you're heard. Great. Uh, and with that, we will move to adjourn this evening's meeting. Uh, our next meeting of the Board of Education, which we just approved, will be, uh, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, on behalf of my fellow trustees, I want to wish everybody a very happy and healthy, and hopefully restful, uh, uh, holiday and season of light, keep being the, the, the light in, in the darkness out there. Uh, and with that, we are adjourned at nine eighteen P M.